Good afternoon, everyone. Joint Committee on Education and Water Land. Today's date is the 6th of February. This is 2:00 PM and we are in Conference Room 309. One bill on our joint agenda today is HB 1837. With regards to school safety, first up, we have DOE offering comments in person.
Hello Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and members of the committee. My name is Audrey Donohue, Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Facilities and Operations, testifying in behalf of the Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony which provides comments on the measure. Thank you, and I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the State Council for Developmental Disabilities offering comments or testimony and support in person.
Good afternoon Chair Woodson, Chair LaChica, Vice Chair LaChica, Chair Ichiyama, and Vice Chair Poi Poi. Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I like your shirt. Very nice. Next, we have the Office of Language Access offering comments in person.
Good afternoon Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and committee member. If you're not familiar with it, from Executive Director for the Office of Language Access, we stand on our written testimony offering comment and available for any question committee may have. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Offering comments. Next, we have testimony via Zoom from the Hawaii Teachers Association in support. HSTA via Zoom. In person.
The President couldn't be here. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of President Olsatui. The HSTA stands on our written testimony, and I want to make a key point that it is nice to have the emergency plan, but our teachers in many of the schools, our fire alarm system doesn't work, our communication system doesn't work. And in order to have a really safe environment that students and faculty can evacuate the schools, we need to have the communication systems fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have testimony from the County of Maui in support. We also have Democratic Party of Hawaii offering testimony as support, not present. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus offering testimony as support. We have Hawaii Youth Services Network offering testimony as support. Councilmember Fulton from Maui offering testimony as support, not present. Is there anyone here also wishing to provide testimony on this bill HB 1837? Seeing none, members, any questions? Please go ahead.
For DOE.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So it says to grant public access to emergency action plan. Does that involve where the students will be located or evacuated to in case of a fire or an emergency?
Yes. Each school has a site-specific emergency action plan, yes.
So the public will have access to where the students will be evacuated to and gathered?
No, I don't think we would want it to be distributed to the public because there's information on there such as staff's names, contact, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess we have to have further discussion on that.
Okay. Does the bill allow DOE to redact certain portions of the plan?
I don't believe so, sir.
Okay. Is there any concern that, so my concern is that someone pulls a fire alarm, they get access to the plan, they know exactly where all the kids are going to be gathered, and that's where you put a explosive device or, you know, open fire. That's very scary to me. I was wondering if DOE has any opinions on that or any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I don't, but I could get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Representative. Members, any other questions? Vice Chair.
DOE. My question has to do with your, well, first, the first part is on the concern regarding sharing some sensitive information. I mean, it's clear, you know, when we heard from the families affected by the Lahaina fires that families were very confused. They didn't know kind of how, basically, how can we empower them or educate them so that they know what to expect in the event of a disaster or an emergency or an evacuation order? And if telephone systems are down at that time or PA systems don't work, what is the department doing in order for this, you know, information to be shared? Who would then be the go-to person if we can't share who the staff, responsible staff would be notifying the parents? And it's also my understanding, as the school's working group were convening meetings in preparation for this bill, which is in our wildfire package, that the DOE also had a hard time contacting the students and figuring out who was, where they were, who was affected. I don't think we fully got to like 100% of like contact rate. But to follow up on their, you know, their status, like, and what type of supports they needed post-fire was going to be, you know, critical. And so I think what this bill is trying to do is it's a prevention measure so that we don't get to that point again where, you know, families are just left with, you know, very little information. So how do you feel like the department has responded to that?
All I can say is, I mean, I sympathize. I'm a mother of four, so I understand what you're questioning. Could it be possible down the road that each specific school, no matter in what district, have a parent or some kind of contact? It's kind of like a phone tree, but not, you know, hand out all our strategic plan. Maybe that can be worked out by individual schools with individual parent teacher association or whoever's parent is involved in a school, that they trust that the contact information won't be spread all over the place? I mean, that's what I'm envisioning. And maybe we should have a discussion, you know, amongst the department to see what can be done.
Yes, no, definitely. And then as a follow-up to that, would it be possible to, once a plan has been identified, be possible to disseminate what is not considered, you know, sensitive information like once a year to the students, like as part of their student packet or, yeah, to distribute it to parents? At least they kind of know either it's posted here or this is who to ask, you know, like just giving them some, yeah, information on where this, you know, they can access this.
We'll take that into consideration. Like I had previously said, you know, each school is site-specific. So it's not like a one plan that fits all. So it can be, you know, in discussion.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Did you want? Deputy.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon. I'm Heidi Armstrong from the Department of Education. And regarding the communication, schools have a mass messaging system that includes the numbers of all of their families. And in the event of an emergency, they can use that. Some schools also have specific communication apps that they use with their families. So they could use that. But as a whole, the department has what we call our mass messaging system that gives schools the ability with one click to be able to communicate a message to all of their families.
Thank you. And Deputy, does that go both ways? Like if a family is without a phone or find themselves without access to the DOE and they needed some type of support or needed to contact somebody from the school just to let them know they're safe? What would be the avenue for that?
We don't have all the answers for the communication in situations like that. I know this is a way for schools to get information out. There are, we do have the capability to receive information in, but of course, you need a device on the other end.
So the current system allows for the school to contact the parents, but it doesn't allow the parents to respond back or the other way?
It can be set up to allow the feedback. And the apps that schools use also provide two-way communication options.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair. Members, any other questions? I have a couple of questions for DOE, please. Whoever is appropriate, I'll just ask my first question. Thank you both for being here. And so per your testimony, you indicated that the proposal as it's written, it would have significant cost implications. Which provisions in your mind would cost or have cost impact?
Probably, as the Vice Chair said, you know, the communication device or devices, I would imagine.
Are there any other provisions that would cost money?
Deputy Armstrong, can you think of anything else, cost provisions? Yeah. We could discuss it and get back to you, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Your testimony also states that if disclosures are made regarding the plans that staff and students would not be safe, they would in fact be in jeopardy. The bill actually articulates that if plans in fact do cause a threat to staff or students, that those plans do not need to be disclosed. Did you see that in the bill?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, so that's in there, so that's actually taken care of. It was interesting to hear or actually to read your testimony, and you made reference to disclosing names and contact information.
Right.
I'm curious as to what specific provision in the proposal you thought that referenced? Because as I read the bill, that is not even implied.
Well, it says to distribute a plan, a specific plan for emergency actions. So in my mind, it would be some kind of paper communication or like Deputy Armstrong said, you know, through telecommunications. So if it's something on paper, I would imagine it can be distributed, you know, all over town, all over the world.
Statutory speaking, you're not allowed to disseminate contact information anyway to the public. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So that would still imply, regarding the communication plans itself, that particular subsection, your testimony explicitly mentioned that the DOE was concerned about having to translate information in real time. Where does it say that in the bill?
I don't know. I would, but I guess it's common practice that any communication for no matter DOE or any other department, it's supposed to by that Office of Language Access or something, try to translate in various different languages.
So if there's actually a fire that's happening in real time, you're required in your individualized action plans to disseminate pamphlets to students?
We would try to, I guess, interpret or try to get a language interpreter, which you and I would know would be almost impossible at the moment of that particular action.
Do you know how each individual school actually effectively communicates to those students that do not have English as their first language in their households?
No, I don't know, sir.
Do you know if each school has effective plans to address that issue?
No, not at the moment.
So we appreciate what the department is doing, but I think that's really the point is that if you're not aware, if we're not aware, if the public's not aware, we want the opportunity to assess these plans to see if they are adequate in terms of safety. The plan also says that, I mean, your proposal also indicates that you need funding, but you're saying that you do not know how much funding you will need for the proposal if it needs to be implemented fully.
At this moment.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, quick recess. Reconvening, thank you so much. Members voting on HB 1837, the DOE Emergency Action Plans, and Communication, members, I would like to recommend a HD1. And per the Office of Language Access's recommendation, we'd like to broaden out the phrasing of language access needs that's found on page four, lines five and six. That simply makes so that the spectrum is fuller in terms of its communication structures. Also, per DOE's recommendation, I would like to add appropriation language to see if they need money to implement this plan, if it in fact makes it all the way through the process and is signed into law, and affecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns, committee on education. Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on House Bill 1837, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Capella, excused. Representative Martin.
Aye.
Representative Martinez, excused. Representative Mariachi.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Peruso.
Aye.
Representative Quinlin.
Aye.
Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Garcia. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Waterline Committee members, same recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair, House Draft One.
Voting on a House Bill 1837 with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganadin.
Aye.
Representative Hashem.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Suzo.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
You, Jared. Thank you, members convening for the committee on education. Today's date is the ninth, or excuse me, it's the 6th of February. We're in 3:09, and it's about 2:24 PM. We have about a dozen bills on the agenda today. First up, we have is HB 2222. That's not a joke. And first up, we have is the Department of Education offering comments.
Aloha Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, Chair Ichiyama, and Vice Chair BoiBoi, and committee members. Audrey Donal, Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Facilities and Operations, testifying in behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony and provides comments. Thank you, and I'll be here if any questions.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the Office of Informational Practices offering comments. Not present. And last, we have individual testimony from Councilwoman Polton from Maui, offering comments. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? HB 2222. Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have HB 1657, DOE and universal screening for dyslexia. First up, we have on our list is the Department of Education offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and we stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have testimony and support from the State Council on Developmental Disabilities in person.
Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica. The Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities stands on its written testimony in support of this measure, HB 1657. Here for comments.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have the Hawaii Disability Rights Center offering testimony and support. We have Hawaii Kids Can testimony and support in person.
Aloha Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, and members of the committee. I'm David San Miaschero, Executive Director of Hawaii Kids Can. I stand on our written testimony in strong support of HB 1657 and offer a few notes. I did want to flag that Senate Concurrent Resolution 110 from the 2010 legislative session already brought together a working group. The group met regularly and produced a more than 100-page comprehensive plan to improve awareness of and strengthen support for persons with dyslexia. HB 1657 builds on the plan's recommendations related to screening and support with a timeline of the 2026 to 2027 school year. Respectfully, this comprehensive plan and the numerous resources, experts, and research banks on this topic provide sufficient clarity. As one of three states to have no dyslexia-specific laws related to student supports, it's Hawaii's time to start turning to action. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have the Hawaii State Literacy Coalition providing testimony and support. We have individual testimonies from about nine individuals all in support. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on HB 1657? Please come up.
Aloha, I'm Jennifer Leowiki Drino, and I'm the mother of a dyslexic child and advocate consultant coach for individuals and families with dyslexia, and a board member for the Hawaii International Dyslexia Association. I stand strongly behind the support of this bill. And I just, a few comments. It's very disheartening to me that Hawaii is one of three states that does not acknowledge dyslexia, and this oversight sends a message that we are intentionally ignoring substantial segments of our population. A few other things that I would like to point out. Dyslexia affects up to 20% of the population, and by not recognizing and screening for it, we're ignoring a major underrepresented group in our state. Minorities and those in poverty are even less likely to be diagnosed and receive the services they require, exasperating existing disparities within our community. The consequences of not being able to read proficiently are directly linked to higher dropout rates, increased homelessness, incarceration rates, and failure to reach an individual's potential. With screening, we can catch children that may be at risk of dyslexia early and put in reading implementation and preventative measures, providing timely and targeted support. I thank you for your attention on this critical matter, and I hope that with the passage of this bill, we can make profound and positive impact on the lives of our students and our future community. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Quick question for DOE. Thank you, AS Armstrong, for being here. Did you happen to see the working group report that was issued?
I don't have that working group report, but it would be good to get a copy of that. I also think because it was done, I don't recall the year it was done, it would be good to reengage those stakeholders. And possibly, a working group wouldn't need to be re, the working group wouldn't have to recreate everything that has been done in the past, but ensuring that the key stakeholders are still current and we all connect together.
Thank you so much. Hawaii Kids Can, if you know when that report was issued, because I haven't admittedly seen it myself as well.
I found the easiest copy to get was on the website for the HIDA, the Hawaii International Dyslexia Association. Yes, it's from SCR 110, and it was a 2010 legislative session.
2010.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have HB 1977 regarding Braille literacy and the Department of Education. First up, we have DOE offering comments. Thank you for being here. Next, we have Attorney General's Office offering comments via Zoom in person.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair LaChica, members. Emma Christopherson, Department of the Attorney General. As we noted in our testimony, the bill requires that blind students take assessments to determine whether Braille instruction and instructional materials are required. This requirement could lead to inevitable noncompliance because it may not be possible for all blind students to, with additional disabilities, to take those tests. So we recommended revisions to remove this requirement. Next, the bill requires Braille literacy instruction to enable students to achieve at least grade level of reading and writing proficiency. However, an IEP cannot and does not guarantee those types of results. So we recommended removing that requirement as well. Next, the bill also requires a parent's or student's signed consent if the IEP team determines that Braille literacy instruction is not required. This effectively gives the student or parent the power to determine methodology, which is an IEP team decision rather than one person's decision. So we recommended deleting this requirement as well. In addition, we suggested other technical revisions. And available for questions, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the Disability and Communication Access Board offering testimony and support. We have DHS offering comments. Hawaii Disabilities Rights Center in support. National Federation of Blind, the National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii in support, available via Zoom, not present. The Hawaii Association of the Blind in support, not present. And we have about eight testifiers, all providing testimony and support. We have Donald Sakamoto available in person in support. Not here. We have Mitchell Butler in support, in person.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Emery Mitchell Butler, and I'm a senior at Colahill High School. I consider myself lucky, in a strange way, at the severe, the severity of my visual impairment. I have Leber's congenital emerosis, meaning that I've had very little vision from a young age, which means that nobody questioned that I needed Braille instruction. However, even when I was in kindergarten, there was this push for me to use what's called a CCTV to try to look at materials. And there's this overwhelming bias present in the education area where even well-meaning members of the IEP team will try to have a blind student use their remaining vision, even when it is not in their best interest, even when it will not result in their success, even when they spend hours trying to read a single page and have eye strain and can't focus because of any degree of reasons regarding their vision loss. Braille is incredibly important to me, and I would not have the success that I have without Braille and without my Braille instruction that I received. For instance, I would not be able to do calculus, the calculus class that I'm in right now, without being able to use Braille. I would not be able to take any of the English classes. Basically, any class that I have, I rely very heavily on Braille. And I'm very lucky that I was able to receive that instruction. But many of our students in Hawaii do not receive that instruction for a variety of reasons. But it's often because that their IEP team believes they don't need Braille because of, they don't, they're not blind enough, in other words. When this isn't true, Braille benefits anybody with enough not having vision where they struggle to read. So I stand on my written testimony in strong support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Mitchell Butler. We also have testimony from Tabitha Mitchell in support via Zoom.
I'm here, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
We can hear you, thank you for being here.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Aloha Chair Woodson and members of the committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. I stand with Emmy, I'm Emmy's mom. And Emmy was born with a rare disease that led to her blindness. And I just want to share a couple of real live realities with you guys. When we found out that she was diagnosed with the rare disease that she has and therefore identified as blind, it was around 2009. And so I did what all parents would do. I went home and I got on the computer to kind of figure out what in the world I needed to do, needed to learn. And what I found is that in 2009, 10% of blind students under the age of 22 were being taught Braille. Let that sink in, 10%. Even worse, 55% of blind kids did not graduate high school. 55%. So many of you guys sitting there in the room today are parents. And just let those statistics sink in for a minute and think about what that reality would be if that was your kid. So the other reality is that in 2009, another statistic that I uncovered was that 70% of blind adults nationwide were unemployed. 70%. And the fascinating, fascinating statistic that I bring to you today is that of that 30% that were employed, 85% of those people used Braille in their jobs. So I knew what my job was as a parent. My job was to get my young daughter, who was going to be blind, Braille training. And she needed to know Braille. And she just stood before you, and what she didn't tell you is that she was just nominated by Colahill High School to be a Presidential Scholar, to apply. The kid would have never been able to do what she's been able to do if she had not had Braille instruction. Now, here's the sad reality, is that as we look at statistics in Hawaii, there were about 170 kids that were registered to receive vision services because they had some type of low vision, and that's K through 12. In 2022, okay, 2022, 330 out of 170 of those kids were receiving Braille instruction or receiving Braille materials. We are failing a huge amount of kids in the state of Hawaii, and we can do better. And that young lady that just talked to you is testament that we can do better. Now, I've read the testimony that came through, and I just listened to the district attorney talk about what we need to remove from the bill. What's very hard for me as a parent is I've lived through that IEP life. She's a, she's a graduating senior this year. I've lived through the IEP team, I've lived through the IEP life for 12 years. And she's not wrong. For year after year, people have tried to get her, to use her vision, use her remaining vision. Nobody really talks about using her non-visual skills, using her blind skills. This is beyond and above, like, getting the Braille materials. That's a whole nother thing. What we need is to be able to get all of these blind kids the opportunity and the right to get Braille instruction. That's part of what's in this bill. The other piece that's in this bill is once we can get that piece kind of in a better place than what it really is, is trying to be able to get the materials in the kids' hands. So I use Emmy as an example. She founded a math club at Colahill High School. For an entire year, when she was at Colahill High School just last year, she not once had a single problem provided to her in Braille. Now, I listened to the DOE provide testimony, and I looked, or I read the testimony, and they talked about the seven or eight organizations and what a great plan that they have for collaboration. The machine's not working. And so I'm here today and am in strong support of this bill to try to figure out how we can improve the Braille instruction in Hawaii and the access to Braille materials. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Christopher Butler offering testimony and support in person.
Hi, my name is Chris Butler. That was my wife, this is my daughter. What they, what they both did not mention is that they, that we want blind children to be contributing, functioning, equal members of society that, that vote for elected members to, to support these types of efforts. What Emmy also didn't say was, which was a very kind of eye-opening moment, again, kind of to the Attorney General's point. A lot of these IEP teams want to force children to listen. to listen to materials rather than to read through, through Braille literacy or Braille skills. And Emmy took the ACT test last year, and she got a 29 on the reading comprehension, which is actually really good, right? So they forced her to listen to the material rather than to provide a Braille copy. So she took the test again, and this time Braille materials were provided, which we insisted on, and she got a perfect score of 36, composite, across the board. So her, my wife, I'm pointing to my wife to the right on the screen, her demand of the IEP team to provide these Braille literacy skills are why she's able to accomplish what she can accomplish. And if those, if those skills were not provided, then she might be unemployed and a burden, and I use that word, you know, literally and not to be harmful, but she would be a burden to Hawaii, to society, to being, not being able to be a contributing member of, of society, to work a job, to pay taxes, and to, to vote for members like yourselves. So I stand in support of this bill, and I, I hope that you guys will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Brandon Young offering testimony and support in person. That's all I have on my list. Actually, there's one more. We have Donald Sakamoto, individual offering testimony and support via Zoom. Mr. Sakamoto, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me, Chair?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair, and other members of the Committee of Education. My name is Donald Sakamoto. I'm a blind individual that lives on the Woodward Side. I'm also a member of the National Federation of Blind Hawaii, as well as the National in Baltimore, Maryland. I am fully supportive of this bill. As an individual that's blind, I was able to learn Braille at an older age at the Ho'oponopah School for the Blind. And it was very difficult. If I had that capability of doing it as a student when I was growing up, probably I would be better fit to run for public office or for doing other things that I couldn't really do. But there was a young boy named Terrance Tom on the Woodward Side. He's learned Braille, was able to become a permanent attorney, was able to become a representative, House of Representatives of the 48th District for Woodward Area for 16 years. And he learned Braille. And he was the first representative or statesman of Hawaii here to learn Braille as well be representative for the community. So I support this bill, and I hope you folks will prepare to do the right thing, go for Braille, move forward, and let this bill proceed on. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Sakamoto. Is there any others wishing to provide testimony on this proposal HB 1977? Please come up and state your affiliate.
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Committee of Education. We should be supportive of disability access and education access for disabled kids to create equity in the system. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you please provide your testimony? We do not have it in our records. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, members, are there any questions? Dr. Brusso.
I have a question for Emmy. So, hello. Thank you for being here. And I believe I remember you testifying last year, and that you had been enrolled in multiple AP classes, and that you had been struggling to find curricular support. And I'm wondering if that situation changed since the last time we spoke with you, if there were more resources available to you?
The, my, the class I'm in right now, AP Calculus, I actually got my textbook for AP Calculus before last year ended. So they were lucky they were able to find a book on the shelf, but yeah, that, it's, it's kind of a chance thing, but that, that's like a different bill, but yeah.
Right, but I think it speaks to, I guess my question is about the availability of resources. And as a person who's directly impacted, I was just hoping you could speak to your experience with those, those resources. Because I think that if we write this into law, that we're going to require the department to provide these kinds of resources, I, I am curious as to the, the variety, the diversity of resources that are available to students. And, and you might have some insight into that.
I don't have huge expertise on this, but there is quite a availability of resources through the American Printing House of, the American Printing House for the Blind in, in Kentucky. A lot of the resources come from there or are referenced in their database. So the requirement for materials would primarily come from there. And it's not really, most of the time, it's not really an availability problem.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to make a brief correction. I was provided Braille materials for my first ACT test, but I chose to listen to the reading section and got a 29. So just sorry for that.
Thank you for that clarification. Members, any other questions? Vice Chair.
Question for the AG. So given that we've heard some personal testimony on experiences with the IEP, in your testimony, AG's recommendation is to remove the section then that would require a parent-signed concurrence, because if not provided, then it makes the assumption that Braille literacy instruction must be provided, and the failure to do so is a denial of a, of a free, appropriate public education. And so the department recommended that the methodology belongs to the IEP team's decision and their alone. But in this case, we've heard personal testimony wherein the parent disagrees with the IEP recommendation, and it was not in the best interest of the student. And so what is the justification behind this proposed amendment?
So again, we are saying that, you know, when there's a signature requirement for the parent or student, then if they don't sign, then it's assumed, like we said, that it has to be implemented. But again, it's, the IDEA says that it should be an IEP team decision, and that there should be, you know, concurrence, hopefully, for decisions like this. If a parent disagrees with an IEP team decision, they have due process rights, and they can pursue those. But here, I, we do believe that it's altering the IDEA's requirement that it's an IEP team decision and not just the parent's.
But the only consequence for not having a signed concurrence is the, the standard that Braille, I mean, Braille materials would be by default provided to that family. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what was, what is, I guess, my, I'm just, I'm just, what would be wrong with that?
So again, it's, you know, the IEP team is to determine what's best and appropriate for, at the free and public, appropriate public education for the student. And that might not always be the case for Braille instruction. You know, that's an IEP team decision.
But I don't, I actually, I disagree that it's, it, you know, the, the responsibility to provide, I mean, it's, 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 it is, you know, the system's responsibility to provide literacy and access to literacy and not education. And so I feel like it would be, to remove this requirement would be a denial of access to them, you know, if, you know, the parent disagrees with the IEP plan.
So it's hard to say because it's an individualized education plan or program. So every student is different. And that's why IEP teams look at the individual student every time they go through and ask these questions, you know, whether this is needed or not, whether they need Braille instruction to give, to offer a FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education.
I have a question for DOE. Thank you. So if this, if you've encountered, if the department has encountered it, what is the process for parents to either appeal or kind of be able to, if they don't, if they determine that what the IEP has, team has, you know, has, their decision, what is the process for parents?
It's to do, they can file a formal complaint, and it will be taken through a due process hearing. But I want to backtrack a little bit. The department is responsible for providing a free and appropriate public education. And I think what we've heard is, in, in this case here, Braille was absolutely necessary to level the playing field. And when that was done, we, we just saw, you know, someone really sore, okay? So our job is to ensure that we provide the students with what they need. Our current process per federal law, IDEA, is to make that decision through an IEP team that's made up of different members. I, I hear that it has happened, but if done correctly, and we really recognize the needs and identify the needs of, of students through the IEP process, they will receive the supports that they need. I just heard otherwise, and yes, that is true, but the IEP process done correctly in identifying the supports that a student needs to have an even playing field to be successful, the IEP affords that option.
Okay, thank you. I do have a follow-up question, and that's on testimony provided by the National Federation of the Blind, where they did say only 30 in 2022, only 30 out of 170 K to 12 students with the DOE received materials in Braille, leaving 140 out of 172 struggle along some way in school. So just wanted to ask if, for the 140 that has been, that has, do not receive Braille, like, what, do they also receive each IEP, IEP plans, or what type of literacy support is provided for those 140?
I'm unable to speak to that data, but according to our DOE data, we have 44 students who are currently eligible under IDEA as visually impaired or blind. And out of those 44 students, 22 students do not have Braille instruction indicated on their individualized education plan, on their IEP. This may be to a variety of valid reasons. And we have just recently worked with our teachers of the visually impaired, we call them our TVIs, to go back and look at these IEPs and ensure that the services that the children are getting are monitored. And we revisit the IEP annually, and we can also revisit IEPs at any time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? I have questions for DOE and AGs. Maybe DOE first. This is a quite involved proposal. So what does, what is the threshold? At what point is Braille instruction recommended for a particular student through the IEP
Annie Kalama is going to come up to answer that question.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. We are required under federal and state guidelines to provide Braille instruction unless otherwise noted or determined through an assessment that it's not appropriate. That assessment might look different for different students, depending on what their needs are. We have many students who are visually impaired but also have other disabilities as well. And so that's where that assessment is critical. So the assessment would be what is determining whether or not it's appropriate for a student to receive Braille. We just, as, as Deputy Armstrong mentioned, pushed out more guidance to the field on doing functional visual assessments and learning media assessments, so that every student would have a learning media plan as part of their IEP, so that we're more intentional and have more structure to making sure that we are providing Braille when it's appropriate.
Is that determined not appropriate language, is that in the IDEA?
Yes.
Or is that in the state statute?
Yes.
That's in the federal law?
Yes.
How is it defined specifically?
It, it is not defined in the federal law. The federal law leaves it up to the IEP team members to look at the assessment results to determine appropriateness.
If the IEP team gets together and there's a disagreement between the parent, the student, and the specialists, there is due process hearing that takes place. How long does that due process hearing take place in terms of a timeframe to be resolved on average?
It, it depends. It may take three, six, or more months. But I do want to interject that it is also, before going to due process, there's opportunity for mediation, there's opportunity for a state complaint to be put into place. And we certainly want to work with our families, bringing more additional, additional information to the table if we need to, to continue that conversation and discussion, so that we can reach consensus.
How long does the complaint process take on average?
60 days.
Do you know, in terms of a percentage, how many of those are resolved satisfactory to the, the parent or guardian or student?
I don't have those numbers. We can definitely get that. I don't know that we have any specific to this topic.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. AG's office, please. Thank you again for being here. Per your testimony, I thought I understood your recommendation regarding 302(c) subsection C for, that's with regards to IEP, the signed concurrence. Perhaps I'm misunderstanding it. Do you mean that as the bill is proposed, it is stating that, that the team in its entirety have to agree upon a policy prescription before it's implemented? Or am I not understanding that correctly?
No, a team does not have to all agree. It doesn't have to be a unanimous decision, but it can't be one person's decision. So an IEP team, you know, will discuss the, the supports or the issue that they're, you know, are, is brought to the table, and then, you know, they strive to find a concurrence, but it's not always unanimous.
I said that poorly. That's not actually what I meant.
That makes sense. Okay, I apologize.
And so if we do not concur with that recommendation, are we going to be in violation with federal law, specifically IDEA?
So if it's kept as is?
That's specific provision only?
On this, on the consent, right?
Yes.
That is our understanding. We can maybe discuss other ways to, other suggestions.
Why, why will we be out of compliance?
Like I said, so the IDEA says that it's an IEP team decision, and it's not just one person. And we are saying that if it's, if there is a consent, or if there's a required consent from the parent or student, if that parent or student does not consent, then effectively they're deciding that Braille instruction and instructional materials have to be included in the IEP. So it ends up being an effective decision by one person.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. No, sir, no, thank you. We don't have any questions for you. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to move on. Thank you for being here, though. We greatly appreciate it. Next, we have HB 2577. This is with regards to the DOE and COVID reporting. First up, we have is DOE in support.
The Department stands for the testimony and support.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Luchekan, members of the committee. This is Sarah Kemble, a state epidemiologist here on behalf- This is Sarah Campbell, State Epidemiologist here on behalf of Dr. Fink for the Department of Health. We stand in support of our written testimony and are available for questions.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have AG's office offering comments in person.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Lachica, members, Emma Kristofferson, Department of Attorney General. As we noted in our testimony, there is a potential for the DOE to be asked by the Department of Health to prove, to provide personally identifiable, identifiable information under FERPA. And under FERPA, the DOE must determine whether there is a health or safety emergency that warrants the release of this information before doing so. So we recommended adding language to the bill to clarify that the Department of Health may not require the DOE to include personally identifiable information unless the DOE has determined that a health or safety emergency exists. Thank you.
Thank you. How long is FERPA in effect because the funding for that is running out?
I would have to check on the exact timing of that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony for HB 2577? Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill, HB 2675, DOE and bullying protocols. First up, we have DOE offering comments.
The Department stands on the written testimony and offering comments.
Thank you for being here. AG's office offering comments.
Good afternoon again, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Lachica, members, Emma Kristofferson, Department of Attorney General. As we noted in the testimony, this bill cites to an incorrect chapter. The references to Chapter 302 should be replaced with Chapter 302a. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have the State Council on Disabilities and Support in person.
Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Lachica, Zosa Rista, Hawaii State Council on Development of Disabilities. We stand on our written testimony in support of HB 2675 and available for questions.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the Hawaii, the Stonewall Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support via Zoom. Stonewall Caucus.
Good afternoon, Representatives. Michael Gloye Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus for the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in full support of HB 2675. Bullying is something that needs to be nipped in the bud at our schools that we cannot just say, we can't just turn a blind eye. We think this bill is long overdue. We've been working and trying to deal with bullying in our public, in our public schools since the inception of the Stonewall Caucus back in 2001. And we ask that you move it forward to make sure that we, ensure that everybody has a safe and protected learning environment. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Melissa Harper Osai offering testimony and support in person.
I was hoping I wasn't first. Good afternoon, everyone. Just because, I'm going to read since I don't want to forget anything. Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Lachica, and members of the committee, I'm testifying in support of HB 2675. I'm a mother of a child with multiple disabilities who was cyberbullied and violated in a general education bathroom at James Campbell High School. I'm also a parent advocate, PACAC Council member, chairperson for Committee, Community Children's Council, active participant with LDH and many nonprofit organizations. This traumatic event has had a huge impact on my son's life and our family. He has missed the 23, 24 school year, so to this, due to this incident. Since his violation of privacy, I have teamed up with LDH to start a group called Together, Stronger Together. We have organized many sign-waving events, et cetera. Many parents have reached out to me since my son's story has gone public, sharing their child's traumatic bullying and how it has impacted their day-to-day lives. Our families should be sharing the amazing progress our children with disabilities are making, not how they are being bullied and harassed. No student should fear going to school or utilizing the bathroom while on campus. Bringing awareness and education to the entire student body, staff, administration about bullying and the criminal ramifications of these actions is a must. The senior who cyberbullied my son is facing felony charges. These policies in place through Chapter 19 are not an effective deterrent. Posting signs in all DOE's school bathrooms alerting students that it is strictly prohibited to have no phones or pictures or videos and imposing appropriate consequences should be implemented by the DOE. Imagine your child, your niece, your nephew, even your grandchild's half-naked picture on social media for everyone to see, screenshot, make humiliating remarks, and forever being cemented on social media for the simple reason they were born with a disability. My son is a beautiful soul who deserves respect, not to be treated like he is less than because he has disability and not fit into the quote "normal mode," mold. I appreciate your time and respectfully ask that you are unanimous in your decision to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have testimony from Chloe Rowan in person in support. Chloe here?
Chloe's testimony.
We have testimony from the Hawaii Disabilities Rights Center in support. Cares also in support via Zoom, or in person, sorry, right there. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Committee of Education, Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support. So I'm not going to recite from the written testimony in front of you, but I do want to be real with you all. This is, we think it's going to be a very effective and helpful policy for students, teachers, and principals and the school system to declare by state law that the DOE school system must disseminate bullying procedures with a flyer. This also protects the DOE school system. We think it's legally sound, although I'm not a lawyer, we could ask the lawyer. And if it's written into the state law, DOE, the school, teachers, and principals have provided its due diligence as per statutory provisions by posting bullying procedures at schools. If something were to happen, the school has done its due diligence. I'm glad we are getting support from the disability community and the religious community and also the Democratic Party and the Ajubti QIA community. These flyers protect protected classes. No one should get bullied. I want, I want to speak especially to the disability community because we're getting support from the State Disability Council. In that testimony, it says, "Those who are disabled are at an increased risk of victimization and criminal acts." And this vulnerability strongly indicates those with disabilities are also at an elevated risk of experiencing bullying. So this flyer is up for debate and discussion, and here are some samples, if we may provide a sample to you.
We have that in our testimony. Thank you.
Okay. And the flyers have great detail and commitment to excellence, which are reflected in this work, and this delivers high-quality, superior levels of work. And although the DOE says this may not be necessary, the state has not enacted a bullying law for a few years, and this does not require manpower. It is something we can say at the schools, we are successful in enacting this policy by posting a flyer to help support bullying. It can start with a public awareness art contest at all schools. It's more relatable to students, and they're more likely to obey and listen if it's something that they relate to. And also, this is a very personal issue to me. My cousin, who was my best friend, Byron, was gay and transgender. He took his own life before he got to transition, and his girl name was Tiffany. When he was in middle school, he was bullied so bad that he could not go into a public bathroom for the rest of his life. He had to switch schools. And although he took his own life in adulthood, I believe it was bullying during middle school that debilitated him and his mental health and shaped his response to people, and those experiences diminished his mental health forever. He never grew to be resilient to trauma. And when we were 25, he took his own life. So when you've experienced bullying like this, it will compel you to act. And today, you will hear stories from testifiers, from the moms, and also, God forgives bad boys and bad girls. It starts with us, it starts with the community outreach, it starts with representation about a hard topic, and it starts with this flyer. How do we teach students to be kind and to be resilient? How do you model that behavior in a classroom? If someone throws an Oreo at you in the cafeteria, how is a student supposed to respond? When someone hollers at you and starts beef, do you holler back? How do we create a culture where we can teach our kids, we can work together despite our differences and beliefs and values? Because in the state of Hawaii, we care. So as the author of this bill, I copied the structure of Act 150 from 2021, a bill from Senator Wakai and a student from Mariner. They implemented a seizure awareness instruction flyer at Department of Health with this exact policy. All I did was edit the words seizure awareness procedure with bullying procedure, and instead of DOH, I put DOE. And it was very simple. It doesn't require an appropriation of funds, just like Act 150 from 2021. Teachers can print from the school office. So thank you so much for your support, and yeah.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have two individual testifiers, both in support, not present. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? Please come up, state your name.
I am humbled to be here. My name is Mana O'Leary. I'm the co-founder and president of God Forgive Bad Boys and Bad Girls. I just wanted to say that I support this bill. I started on my journey with the youth in the schools of the DOE. I also partnered up with Melissa on the streets, wave signing of anti-bullying on the streets. And but, you know, during that process, you don't really understand bullying until it happens close to your home. And what happened was my niece got beaten up in a bathroom by older girls, bigger girls. And then what I noticed with my niece was that it was stages. It went from her grades went drop, she never let go of school, and then she was contemplating suicide. And so when I looked at that, I mean, I even went to the point where I went to, had to go court with her three times for a TRO, transfer her to another school. And so I support this. And the reason why I support this is because I've worked with a variety of youth in Hawaii from the ages of five all the way to 18. And, you know, it should be on, in our schools, so as they grow and as they learn, right, they can understand what bullying is. They can understand the tactics of bullying, they can understand the effects of bullying. And also, you know, I wanted to share that I also work with the children after school. I've been in awareness to our children, and that way, it gives them a choice. It gives them a choice because when they learn about the bullying, when they learn about the effects of bullying, even from the flyers, it gives them a choice to be a bully, right? Or understand what bullying is. And also, I wanted to share, and I feel that this is very important, especially within the kids from elementary to intermediate, is that they have an outlet, they have a place in a school that they can talk to somebody that they are being bullied. It's very important because, again, because I experienced how the levels of grades dropping, no let go of school, fake the sickness, then contemplating suicide, it's happening right now as I'm speaking on this microphone in our school. So I support this bill. I pray that we can bring more awareness in our kids, and I pray that we can come alongside and work together with each other. My name is Mana O'Leary, and I'm from God Forgive Bad Boys and Bad Girls. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do we have any testimony? Sir, if you could submit your testimony, we don't have it in our records. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up, state your name and your affiliation.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Pestle-Maga. Thank you, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Lachica, and members of the committee. I'm a parent of a child who used to be in the DOE. She was bullied heavily for years. She refuses to return to a regular school for fear of continuous bullying from all different areas, from students and some staff. Our family strongly supports this step forward. We know it's not perfect in the language right now, or things need to be altered, but this is a great step forward. So thank you all who, who put this bill forward this year. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Vice Chair.
Question for the DOE. So we've seen just, I mean, we always see it, but we've seen, I feel, more and more incidents being reported in the news media of just escalating, of just fights and brawls happening, both on and off campus, but really as a result of unresolved incidents of bullying and just seeing it happening. So including one in one of my district area schools in December, Millilani Middle School, and so where they did say they were unable to enforce because it happened outside of school grounds. And so in your testimony, you mentioned being able to share materials in the beginning of the school year as part of the student packet. Does that include the process and procedures for enforcement? Kind of like, and as well as like, what are, like, consequences should a student find, you know, be, you know, found that they have been involved in bullying? Like, what is shared in the student packet?
So at the beginning of the school year, well, our bullying, our Hawaii revised, or Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter 19, is our guidance on bullying and that it is not allowed in school. And students are, Chapter 19 is reviewed with all students at the beginning of the year and periodically throughout the year. At the beginning of the year, all parents are sent a letter that asks them to review Chapter 19 with their children. It also gives them access, a link to access Chapter 19 and how to request a hard copy of Chapter 19. The letter also shares about our Speak Now Anti-Bullying App, which is accessible to all students to allow them to report an incident, either identifying themselves or others or remaining anonymously through, through an app. There is also a form that parents have access to and students have access to to report bullying, but at any time, and the guidance is included in this packet, any student or adult can report any incidences of bullying to a teacher, a counselor, a school official, a school employee, and follow-up will, will occur. We have our Unity Day, which is the department's effort to express our stance on bullying. But the department does not promote bullying. Bullying incidences happen in our schools, but it takes a community effort to stop that. It is the behavior of community members, parents, our students, and our staff, and all watching our behaviors and how we model and interact with others so that our children do not emulate or copy those behaviors. And when they do, the school is required by Chapter 19 to take action. To address your question, what action is taken, that is unique to, that is incident independent, and the school looks at all aspects of that incident, and what is the most appropriate action to ensure that behavior stops, that the child learns from that incident, and that future incidences won't occur?
Mahalo. I mean, I think, thanks for Claire sharing a lot of the resources that are made available. I think what this measure is, is really it's another prevention measure, because like, what we're seeing is, like, how can, we're not saying that, it's not saying that, you know, the department is solely like responsible. It is a community effort. But often, what we are seeing, you know, is that it's often too late. Like, they are already involved in acts of violence, or they have moved schools, or it's affected them in a severe way. And so it's, it would entail, you know, some type of proactive, I guess, action on the department's part beyond what is already being provided in the beginning of the school year, yeah.
And I did neglect to say, too, on our website, we do have available to everyone extensive information on bullying. I pulled the I pulled these pages from the website, but it talks on another avenue where it shows how to report an incident. It talks about prevention, reporting, what happens next after an incident is reported, follow-up, follow-up for the victims, follow-up for the bullies, follow-up for the bystanders. There's bystanders, there's also videos that explain this and show the proper actions to be taken. We do have our Unity Day banners displayed. We also have Speak Now posters, which are visuals that remind students and adults on how to report a bullying incident through that app. I did hear from previous testimony ensuring that this information is in the restrooms. We don't have specific locations, but ensuring that it's in the restrooms is a good reminder for all. And we continue to teach our students about bullying. And as the incidences occur, which they do, we must address them, and we do. But any incident is a tragedy for the victim. Bullying is horrible. I, the department does agree, it does leave lasting impressions, and we all want it to stop.
Mahalo. Mahalo, deputy.
Go ahead. Brett Prusso.
For the department, so thank you for staying there. So I appreciate all of the work that you're doing around bullying. But it occurs to me that, you know, having taught in multiple schools, that schools have distinctive cultures and those cultures are also connected to their communities, but that there is an opportunity for the department to do a lot of work around school culture through teacher professional development. And I'm wondering if there are complexes who have taken the lead in this area and who are really focused on addressing this problem in a proactive way? Because I do think that it is, it seems to me, a problem that can be addressed through reconnecting communities with schools.
I first want to ask a long question and then if she stops.
And, you know, that maybe there are already complexes or schools who can provide a model for what this might look like? Because I think that this has happened, like this kind of work has happened in other schools and in other districts. So I'm wondering if we are doing any of that work in Hawaii?
Yes, we are, and you are correct. We do have many school complexes who have their own unique and individual initiatives responsive to their unique communities. And we do provide sharing opportunities. An example would be complex area superintendents sharing what they are doing in their schools, especially schools that are showing signs of a very well-established positive school culture, extensive family and community involvement. What that looks like in one complex area may be slightly different in another, but the bottom line is they have these components in place. And we do have our complex area superintendent sharing with the other complex area superintendents. We also have principal forums where principals are, share their best practices and their successful practices in this area with the other principals. And we also have opportunities for different teacher groups to get together. Not all of the teachers, there's different groups because we have so many teachers. But I do agree, the more we can share our best practices, the more other schools and complex areas can learn and pick up what would work for them in their respective areas.
And I'm wondering if you can share some of those examples with the chair, and then he can share them with us? Because it would be good for us, if we're going to make public policy around this issue, to be better informed about best practices happening throughout the district.
Okay. We will put that together and give it to the chair. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Chair, members, any other questions?
So I was, I did just look up Chapter 19 to see what it is that you were sharing at the beginning of the school year and referring back to. It's, it's not an easy to digest and understand document around bullying or around understanding what exactly is bullying, what the consequences are, et cetera. It's, so I'm hoping that you actually don't just share that document. You have some stuff that is more user-friendly for parents and students.
Yes, and when, when the students, when the school, the school teams share this information with students at the beginning of the year, Chapter 19 is not read verbatim. It is put into student-accessible language in, which would differentiate, which would be different from elementary to middle to high schools. So yes, the schools do more than just giving that document to their students.
Can I ask a follow-up? Are the clear consequences for bullying shared? I realize that you are somewhat limited in the private school system that just kick kids out, and then they come to the public school system. But, you know, in terms of the consequences that are available to you that are appropriate for different acts, different ages, including criminal charges, is all of that shared?
Yes, yes. There's not a specific consequence for all bullying incidences. The consequence is designed for the particular situation with the whole goal of ensuring that that does not happen again, that learning has taken place and working toward, but it's very difficult, restoring relationships that have been so badly crushed.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? A quick question for DOE. So you articulated that currently this is H R, Chapter 19. Is it not in fact a higher standard if we incorporate it into statute, H R S, under
It might be higher statute, but the, the information that needs to get out, the words, the language that needs to get out, the communication to all of the stakeholders, we continue to update that and improve on that. We, with all of this, we need actions to change, our actions to stop. And so we will continue to share that bullying is not allowed, it is not tolerated, but we do have to act upon it when it does happen. We post the information online, we share it with our parents, we share it with our schools, we share it with our community. I don't know if another law would improve the effort.
There is a significant difference in that the admin rules are designed by the department, whereas the H R S is designed by the legislature.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions, members? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. HB 2661 Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. First up, we have DOE offering testimony in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair La Chica, Carrie Tom from the Department of Education, Office of Talent Management, offering testimony in support. We stand on our written comment, or support, our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have HSTA, or no, excuse me, Hawaii Teacher Standards Board offering comments.
Mitahiga, Hawaii Teacher Standards Board. We offer comments on this compact and this bill because we still have a lot of questions that are unanswered. We've listed them on the bill. We've spoken with other states recently at a conference. They had a conference the same time we did, although we were not at that conference. But there's still a lot of questions that haven't been answered, and one of them is how much is this going to cost each state? They still don't know. And so at this time, we're just offering comments. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the Hawaii Association for Justice offering comments in person here and one individual offering comments. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on HB 2661? Members, questions?
For the department. So in previous conversations around this interstate compact, there have been concerns expressed about varying levels of rigor for different SATFs. And I am wondering if the department is, and I understand that you're working with HSB, but if you are already considering questions of teacher quality? Because I'm concerned about the low standards adopted by many states who are already participating or have signaled their willingness to participate in the compact. And then the other area of concern that has to do with rigor of preparation has to do with cultural background and understanding of local history and local context. So could you speak to those concerns?
If you could please explain what a SATF is briefly.
Okay. So Carrie Tom, Department of Education, a SATF is a state-approved teacher ed program. And those are approved by the Hawaii Teacher Standards Board, you know, for licensing purposes. I agree. I mean, I think that's when we talk with the Hawaii Teacher Standards Board and collaborating, those questions in terms of quality of programs, maybe in different states, have come up. But we have to defer to the Teacher Standards Board to make those final determinations. But some of those might be valid. So we probably have to have further conversations on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have HB 2384. This is SFA Special Fund. First up, we have is Budget of Finance in Support. Thank you so much. Admin Bill. Next, we have SFA offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. SFA stands on its written comments, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for being here. That's all I have on my list. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on HB 2384? Seeing none, members, are there any questions on this admin bill? Straightforward. Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. HB 1903, Early Learning Programs. First, we have the Executive Office of Early Learning offering testimony and support.
Hello, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair La Chica, members of the committee. I'm Yoko Adiko across, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony and strong support of this measure. I'd like to quickly highlight a few comments that have more detail in our written testimony. The intention of this bill is to expand existing, the existing pre-plus contract model, to also apply to underutilized spaces on other public properties in addition to what already currently exists on Department of Education campuses. This measure has no fiscal request, nor requires any operational funding, as it would provide EOL the authority to contract early learning services on existing underutilized spaces. We also want to note that the amendments also include the verbiage "early learning" as early learning is already defined in our statute. I'm available to answer any questions you have, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have DHS in support. They are not present. We have the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. Not present.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs stands in strong support of this measure. Just to highlight really quickly, we are about four years into our 15-year strategic plan, and one of the most clear needs for the native Hawaiian community is the ability to provide high, high-quality K K and Kupuna care, and we think this is a measure that will help advance that. Mahalo.
Thank you for being here. And part of me, we have the Early Learning Board offering testimony and support. Early Childhood Action Strategies offering testimony and support via Zoom. Vivian?
Yes, good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. Vivian Eto'o, on behalf of Early Childhood Action Strategy. We do stand on our written testimony in support of HB 1903, which we do believe will expand options and facilitate increased access to early care and learning opportunities for our children. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have AA Coalition offering testimony in support. Very good. Thank you so much for being here. That's all I have on my list. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? If you, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have a question for the Office of Early Education. When you establish a new program in one of these public facilities that maybe was not previously used for preschool or early learning, I assume there'll be some retrofitting, some renovation, as you're doing now for, for school settings? So how do you, how would that work with that investment and having an assurance that we would get the benefit of that investment over time?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. Thank you for that question. So right now, we have not designated any specific location for that kind of work. And I just also wanted to back up just a little bit. So before we started, we had the opportunity to provide children with these fabulous spaces that we're able to do right now. EOL did previously open up other, EOL public pre-K without the renovations. So we were using existing spaces as they were already. And so there may be opportunities for that, of course. We are going to have to partner with the Department of Human Services because it would have to be licensable spaces. And so there's a lot of things that come into play with that. So I think that this is going to be something that we'll have to explore. We also know that there's different landholders in Hawaii that have different rules for contracting on their property. So those are things that we'll have to look at as we start to identify places.
Thank you so much. Members, any other questions? Vice Chair.
Yeah, same. For EOL, what would be the process once you've identified, once this measure passes into law, to work with the existing state agencies for identifying, especially in areas, high-needs areas, to kind of determine if we can use their existing space?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that whenever, if we were to identify an agency, we'd have to definitely meet with them to figure out what kind of rules and regulations they have. If they have, for example, use of facilities fees that they typically charge folks and other things like that, then we'd also have to work with Department of Human Services to ensure that the space is licensable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any other questions? Quick question, EOL. What is the legal mechanics of how this bill will actually help? Not straightforward.
Yeah, thank you. So right now, the current pre-plus contract is a public-private partnership on DOE campuses. So what happens right now is, so for example, of the 14 current pre-plus contracts, they're all given to Head Start grantees right now to service different children in various communities. And so the way that this would assist in the broader context is, there are some places that have been looking for space to operate an early learning program, but they have not been able to find a space where they can utilize a program. And so by EOL being able to have the opportunity to help people find spaces where they can, we can expand access, I think that that's how it's going to help the best.
So the statutory change just broadens the applicability of where you can have these programs?
Yeah, so right now, the term pre-plus is not actually identified in definition in our statute. So that's why it says early learning. And so now that it's called early learning, it actually will actually broaden it to, broaden the age range from zero to kindergarten entry. And it will actually broaden the scope beyond DOE campuses as it is right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. HB 2578, pre-kindergarten only. HB 2578, Pre-Kinergarten Only Public Charter Schools. First up, we have EOL in person in support. No? Yes?
Hi, Chair Woodson, Chair La Chica, and members of the committee. I'm Yuko Arico Across, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning, and we stand on our written testimony and support, and defer to the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the Hawaii State Public Charter School Commission, Testimony and Support in Person.
Aloha, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair La Chica, members of the committee. PJ Forre, Interim Executive Director, and we stand on our submitted testimony and here to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. That's all I have on my list. Anyone else? 2578. See none, members, any questions? A quick question for the Commission. If you can explain how this statutory adjustment is necessary, why it's necessary, I should say.
So, with the recent approval of a pre-K-only charter school, some of the articles within 302D-39 are not applicable to charter, pre-K-only charter schools, like athletics and the other sections that we indicated. So, we just wanted to specify that, so that we wouldn't put in any monitoring tasks around pre-K-only charter schools participating in athletics and other items in those articles.
Thank you.
Yep.
Members, any other questions? See none, moving on to the last bill. HB 2061, what is this? DOE and charter schools and sports participation in regular DOE schools. First up, we have is DOE Superintendent Offering Comments in Person. Thank you. Next, we have the Charter School Commission in Person in Support.
Yes. Chair Woodson, Vice Chair La Chica, and members of the committee. The Charter Commission stands on its submitted written testimony, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Ikaika Hawaii, a Waterman's Academy Safety Skills Ocean Stewardship in Support, not present. We also have the Hawaii Academy of Arts and Science in Support, not present. And we have individual testimony from Vanessa Ott, offering comments on Zoom, not present. Next, we have Janine King, Individual Offering Comments, or actually Offering Testimony and Support via Zoom.
Hi, my name is Janine. Thanks so much for giving me a chance to speak on this. I'm just going to read my testimony that I submitted. I'm a parent of four children living in the Pohua area. My ninth grader goes to Haas currently, so Hawaii Academy of Arts and Sciences. He is currently a player on the Hilo Rush soccer team. He's a competitive soccer player. This was his first opportunity this year to play high school soccer. He got good grades, he gets a physical, we submitted all of our paperwork, knowing that our current location specifies that we need to go to Pohua High School for sports. Pohua High School does not offer a soccer team. We submitted all of our paperwork to Ka'au High School this year, only to find out later from the athletic director that he was ineligible, just because we don't live in the correct zone. So, I reached out to a few different folks through the school district, spoke with Stacy Bello, spoke with a few other coaches in the Hilo area for various other high schools. And Mr. Eligan actually finally reached back out to me and said that this was a bill that they were going to propose to allow students like my son to play high school soccer for any team within the district. So, I am a huge supporter of this bill. I'm really hoping it goes through. It'll give my son and many other students an opportunity to play high school soccer, hopefully earn the scholarships, and have the camaraderie that, you know, I think is important for high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Wayne Alvarez, Testimony and Support via Zoom.
How's it everybody?
How's it?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to, I did submit a written testimony, but I 100% agree with this bill. My son also goes to Haas and was denied the opportunity to play his freshman year of soccer, for the same reason that Pohua High School did not have a soccer program. We later tried to get him to Ka'au High School and was pretty much told, no, you know, there's nothing they can do, he should be playing in Pohua, they didn't have his desired program. It's a little frustrating. I am a registered high school, Chihuahua Soccer Association for our state. I coach for the Onis Negro Soccer Club in Puna, you know, serving our community and our kids. And it's the same thing for a bunch of our players that were denied, you know, football. If this bill could be passed, I mean, it would allow our kids to, if the bill, you know, if our kids cannot play for Pohua or the school in their district, they can jump over to the next district. I don't see a problem with that. There's a lot worse our kids could be doing than trying to play sports, you know? We should be trying our best to push them to do these things as a coach. I see the benefits for our children. So, yeah, 100% support this bill, and I hope we can get this thing pushed through, so our kids can play ball.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Denise Chavez in Support via Zoom. Ms. Chavez.
Sorry, guys, I didn't notice my mute was on. My name is Denise Cuevas. My daughter is Naveel Lancaster. She is one who was affected by the current ruling that was set in place. She attends Connection Public Charter School in Hilo. Our district is Pohua District, so she was also denied the opportunity to play. She's been playing since she was eight years old. She's also an active coach for youth soccer as well. It was very devastating. I noticed, I witnessed her be very emotional, going through hurt and rejection, and I feel no child should go through that, just to play something that they love and to be active in the community, to be punished, and not have an outlet or anything else to do. And just sit by the bleachers and seeing her watch with tears in her eyes, it hurts as a parent, to see your child not being allowed to do something and being told no. But I stand by my written testimony, and I hope you guys can find it in your heart to support this bill as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have three individuals all testifying in support, not available. Actually, that's six individuals all in support. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? See none, members, are there any questions? Go ahead.
For the DOE. I wanted to understand, the current policy, kids from charter schools are allowed to play on teams in their geographically designated school district, is that right?
Yes.
And what is the, what is the situation if they're trying out and they basically take the spots of kids who go to that school?
It's they, because they have the equal opportunity to try out at their home school or the school in their geographic region, the tryouts would be equal for all students. So, it wouldn't matter if they were charter school or if they were students at that particular school. The same rules would apply for both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Just have a question on, if a student does gain, you know, acceptance, like, how would the, whose responsibility does that fall under? For, you know, as the student gains acceptance into another school's athletic program, if there's disagreements or they're not meeting the expectations of the coach, where does the kind of, you know, implement, you know, how does it fall under?
The same rules would apply. So, whatever is, whatever are the articulated rules for that team in that school, all players, whether they were charter school or from that particular school, would be held to the same rules and the same standards.
Of the home school?
Yes.
And the determination whether or not the student from the charter school remains or not in the athletic program is also with the home school?
Yes, because the rules are established through that team and through that school, and they must be adhered to.
And then, this bill would expand the district area to the complex area, is that what this would do?
This bill would allow a charter school student whose geographic DOE school does not offer their sport of choice to be able to choose another school within that complex area to attend. And that opportunity is not afforded to any students. Our DOE students, if they, if their home school doesn't offer their sport of choice, they cannot go to another school because of that sport. So, a sport is not a reason, wanting to play a particular sport is not an acceptable reason for a geographical exception, which is what they would need to do to attend another school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Recede. Thank you, member. Thank you, members. Reconvening, decision-making on several bills. First up, we have HB 2222, DOE and stagger start times. Members, the recommendation is we want to remove the Sunshine Law exemption for the task force that's found on page five, lines three through five, per OIP's recommendation, and defect the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on House Bill 2222, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Capella, excuse. Representative Martin.
Aye.
Representative Martinez.
Aye.
Representative Mariachi.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Perusso.
Aye.
Representative Quinlin.
Aye.
Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 1657, DOE and universal screening for dyslexia. Members, in the preamble, I would like to delete the first two sentences, and so it would read, "There are insufficient early detection policies." The first two sentences are not necessary. And we're going to defect the date for now to move the discussion to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on House Bill 1657, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the absence of Representative Capella, any members wishing to vote with reservation? Any members voting? No. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Going on to HB 1977, Braille Literacy and the DOE. Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 1977, Braille Literacy and the DOE. Members, per AG's recommendation, I agree with much of what they said with regards to the IEP process. But in addition to that, just to clarify, regarding the literacy assessment, that needs to be done at least every 12 months. That's a proposed change to 302A-C, subsection C-3. Provisions to complement that prior recommendation and removing language with regards to assurance of grade level proficiency. That is something that cannot be assured in most cases, and so we don't want to incorporate that into statute. Also, per the recommendations, I want to keep for now the deletion of the proposed language found in 302A-C, subsection C-4. That's with regards to the IEP. We want to make sure that the IEP team together makes that recommendation. Technical non-substantive changes and defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1977, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. For the remainder of the agenda, noting the excused absence of Representative Capella, any members voting with reservation? Any members voting no? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 2577, DOE and COVID reporting, defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, members, voting on House Bill 2577, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Members, any members wishing to vote with reservation? Any members wishing to vote no? No vote for Rep. Garcia. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 2675, DOE and bullying procedures. I would like to pass this with HT1, defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 2675, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting with reservation? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 2661, Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. Members, per the Hawaii Association of Justice, they have very valid concerns. And so I would like to accept their recommendation, which is found in section G1. That's on pages 22 and 23. Removing the immunity clause with regards to errors and omissions. We want all DOE employees to be treated the same. Defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on House Bill 2661, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting with reservation? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 2384, SFA Special Fund. This is admin bill. We'll move this, blanking out the appropriation amount incorporated into the committee report. Defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on House Bill 2384, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting no or with reservation? Seeing none, Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. HB 1903, EOL and Early Learning Programs, defecting the date to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair.
Voting on House Bill 1903, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting with reservation? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 2578, Pre-Kindergarten Charter Schools, defecting the date. This is a recommendation to July 1st, 3,000. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Members, voting on House Bill 2578, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting with reservation? Any members voting no? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to the last bill, HB 2601, Charter School Students and DOE Sports and Participation. Members, we will defer this bill. If we're going to change the process and procedure for charter school students, we need to do it for all students. And that's a deeper discussion, so we will defer.